Meeting of the Arrowhead High School's Board. Please rise and join me in saying. Okay, all, all. Seven board members are here and Tim Wang is with us remotely. Do you hear us, Tim?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay, so open meeting?
Yes.
All right, meeting has been notified. I'm probably noticed. There's a couple of things I'd like to say before we get started here. First of all, I'd just like to have you keep a couple of things in perspective. I spent three hours at the War Memorial Saturday, so you may have seen it on TV, on the news perhaps. There was a program entitled Afghanistan Conversation. It consists of about seven people on the dais. Two Afghanistan Iraqis, that's been three more. Vietnam, a couple Vietnam vets, and a Gold Star mother who lost her son. Vietnam, okay, at the age of nineteen. The stories that were told by these, by these men, one of, one of these gentlemen was missing both legs. He was on prosthesis. The deep was blowing up. He thought he was dead. He called him, several years ago, he called the men of his platoon and talked to them all and come to find out the entire episode was videotaped. Took him nine years to go look at that. And the only reason he could do it was because his wife was actually was in Iraq. Nineteen-year-old young man blown up, he's laying up on the ground, legs gone. He said the thing that amazed him was contempt in his face, he was ready to die. He knew what he had done, what he had done for his country, helping his fellow soldiers and that kind of stuff. He knew he wouldn't see his family again, he would, he wouldn't get married, he wouldn't have kids. And there are several stories similar. One of the guys saw this, this recently, this what's happened this week. Saw his interpreter, one of his interpreters he worked with, he was on three of, three of Afghanistan. His interpreter was just killed. And I just sent him back that interpreter had saved his life. They were in a meeting. Interpreter was on his way, another guy, another gentleman was on left Afghanistan. Interpreter called, he says, the guy on your left is Taliban. And they turned, say that he's, they're planning on calling in a strike to take this group out once the meeting's over. They're dealing with life and death situations every day. The young women that are being raped, murdered, married off to people, I mean, girls are going to be just brutally attacked because they, they have the audacity to go to school and that kind of stuff. So please keep those things in mind. What we're talking about here today is important. Don't, don't, let me discount that. This isn't life and death, this is procedural stuff that we're dealing with, we're trying to get squared away because an honest mistake was made several weeks ago. So another thing, so I'd ask for some decorum, I would ask for respect, let's respect each other out back as adults. Amy, you made a motion last month. I tried to tell you that it was out of order or something because it was not, it was not noticed and we couldn't take action on it. Tim, in the meantime, we'll postpone it, there is no such an actual order, postpone a motion, you can take one, if you can't postpone a motion. I will be asking you later at the appropriate time, if you care to make that same motion. Okay, I wanted to throw that out. Chris, you've asked several times today about amending these minutes to reflect that motion, okay? I realize you're new, don't fully understand our procedures and so on. We will be approving the minutes, okay, for several meetings. I'm going to ask that August eighteenth, special coordinating the standalone as a special motion to amend. But I need to approve it. After that's approved, as a move, we can then have comments. If you care to have a motion to change it, we will do that at that time, all right? Do I have permission to speak regarding?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you. Do I, do I permission to speak? First of all, I'd like to thank you for everything you do for our veterans, for the honor flight. I think it's really commendable. What you do is amazing, I think serving for our country is, so, I. Second of all, the only reason that I, the only reason that I bring up the point of order is, I'm again, still working on as much as possible. I am, you're right, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. I appreciate some of the things that Laura shared with me tonight. And I'm starting to, I'm trying to digest that this is very, seems very complex. But the simple, the simple point of order, if Robert's Rules of Order is, is our manuscript that we follow. It states on page eighty-three at the top of the page that unfinished business involves three possible items. The first one is a motion from any actually pending, which is from the previous meeting that was adjourned. So that should be our number one item prior to anything else that happens here.
On again, Chris, that was not a valid motion, you tried to let it know. It was only a motion at that point. We'll be taking that up later in the meeting, okay? It is built in, we have, it's not on agenda, I wouldn't call it that. So the first thing on our agenda is we have, we have our attorney Bob Butler on the phone with us or on Google Meet. Unfortunately, can't see him because he's, he's on the laptop here. We will move the mic's phone up there so we can all hear him. Our first action item is to suspend policy one, our first, I'm gonna have myself. Our first action and discussion is to suspend policy one fifty-one point five, the agenda format. Because our, our policy actually requires or specifies what our format of our agenda is. Okay, we have a specified format and layout. We're asking to amend that, to move the superintendent's report up a little higher in the, in the of assistance comments, which we did last month. So do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Wait a second. Okay, it's the movement second to amend the amend the agenda law, superintendent's report to, to not take place prior to expectations and comments from members of the public. Any discussion?
I, I, I feel strongly that we should be following what's written in our, in our, you know, our, I don't, I'm not sure the exact name of the document, but should go board minutes, then bill of, bill of distribution bill list, and then the comments from the public. So I think it's also wrong to have comments from the public coming later. I, I, I think this all needs to, I think we're, you know, it's interesting, after the last meeting that we had, I feel like we were like really, you know, we were really moving forward. And I feel like when this came out, I, the other, on Friday, I was like, oh my gosh. You know, I feel like we're moving backwards again, I feel like we're not being as transparent as we can be. And it, and it, it concerns me that, you know, things are getting kind of jumbled around. I think if we want to be, continue to be seen as being transparent as a board, we really need to follow some of these, these rules that are in place and the order that this.
Thank you, Chris, but we are not changing anything, we're not taking anything away from the public comments. We've done this on multiple occasions, sometimes we have some, somebody come in the ones that address the board. And rather than having to wait to that point, we modify the agenda so they can address us and they can, they can leave. So this is not an uncommon procedure for us to amend the agenda for current situations. Any other discussion? Right. Yeah, so I, to your point, Kent, this has happened many times before. It makes this, done primarily as convenience to the people attending the meeting and/or to the public. And it also can serve to help clarify things that are about to come in the board meeting so that there isn't unnecessary time wasted on information that is going to be shared by a superintendent anyway. So if she can share first, that helps all of us. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all the papers say aye, motion to suspend the agenda to Woodson Superintendent Court. All right.
Aye.
All right, Carrie.
Aye.
All right, the second item on the agenda is discussion to approve the suspension of attorney-client privilege during this meeting in order to obtain legal guidance from attorney Bob Butler, who is our legal attorney from Legal Scouts Associates, School Board, School Board Association. The reason for this is normally in discussions with our attorney or our, held in closed session, their client, their attorney-client privilege. So in order to have him speak to us in, in public, in an open meeting situation, we have to suspend the client privilege for this meeting. We have a motion for such.
So we'll set up this process.
You discuss after it's approved.
It says discussion and action.
Chris, you need to learn the procedure. After motion, we then discuss the motion.
This is point of order, this is not our legal counsel, this, this is not, this board's legal counsel. This is Wozniak, this is not our legal counsel.
He acts as our legal counsel, we have several different legal counsels, we have one for sheriff, we have WSB, legal counsel, various, various things, we have different legal attorneys. In this case, he advises us on policy issues and other issues of pain to the superintendent. Any other discussion? We have one second.
I.
Okay, we have a movement a second, motion a second to approve the suspension.
I have, I have something I'd like to say. Okay, so I, I, I don't think that that's the right way to approach this. We, right now, but a lot of members of the public don't realize, and I'm very concerned as a taxpayer community, that there's potential pending to actually get this board. Is, is Wozniak, are, are these lawyers ready to defend us if something like that would happen?
They will not.
They will not be defending us if that happens. So we have to defer an attorney's side. That would be our insurance company, would be aside. Not an issue. All right. Oh, we have a motion, yeah, second on floor, discussion suspended to approve the suspension of attorney-client privilege during the meeting in order to obtain legal advice, guidance, rather, from attorney Bob Butler, Legal Scouts Association School Board. All those papers say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, two names. Chris. All right, thank you. All right, the third item is approval of the minutes for the July fourteenth regular board meeting, July fourteen special school board meeting, August eleventh school. August eleventh special school board meeting. We have a motion for that.
Bob, I'm sorry, Kent, this is Tim. In reviewing the minutes of the August eleventh board meeting, I note that there is, I think, an error in the order of events. And so I don't know if you want to wait for a, a motion to approve those, or if I can move to approve subject to modification. Why don't I do what I just suggested?
Okay. Why don't you do that?
So I'd, I'd move to approve the three sets of minutes that you've described, however, on the August eleventh minutes, it's indicated that Chris had made his objection to the manner in which the nominations and election of the nominees for the open board seat were handled and the notice process that was given, the minutes indicate that that objection came after the first three votes were conducted. My recollection was that it came beforehand. I did have a chance to review a YouTube video, which I know is not an official document of the district, but it does appear that his objection was made after the interviews and before the election. That order of events, I think, may be significant. And so I'd ask that the minutes be modified to reflect that order of events.
I agree with you, okay. Yes. Any bells have any?
So the safe wording, just my safe wording.
Yep, just, you'll have to work it out. So that's what you had, yeah. Same, same wording, just pull it down after the, after the interviews.
Yes, sir.
What's that?
Yeah.
I said.
I know.
Okay. I also have a point within, with regards to, I know that I emailed you on the UN superintendent, Mr. President, the July fourteen meeting to have added to the minutes our superintendent's discussion and action points with regards to this, so we can have those dates officially recorded that she spoke at that meeting, because I think it's going to be important if there is any further legal action against this board, that those are added to the minutes. And I do think those are, don't worry.
Yep, typically, and maybe we want Bob Butler to chime in on this. Typically, when it comes to minutes of meetings, what the law indicates is you need to have in your minutes motions and the decisions. And then what we do at Arrowhead is we also add to it initial information and discussion that helps the board reach their decision. The part that Chris is referring to was my superintendent report, where I was just giving a reminder to the board, here's our process for filling a vacant seat. And because we have members of the public here, alerting them that we have a vacant seat, here's why, here's the process. So it wasn't a decision, it wasn't a motion, it wasn't a decision. So that would be unusual for the way we take minutes to have that level of detail added to the minutes. And then I would ask, is that how we want to proceed moving forward? Because I don't want taking minutes to turn into a transcript of every meeting. So.
Bob, were you able to catch all that?
Yes, I was.
Okay, any comments?
Well, Laura's accurately put forth what the law requires. So, and as I understand, you've adopted Robert's Rules of Order, which that also indicates that minutes should not reflect the drafter's opinions or any else's, anybody else's opinion, favorable or unfavorable, unless by local policy you have adopted or by a board action, that you want to have the minutes be beyond something of motions made, the names of the persons who made the motions, the results, and any other essential elements of the official action. So the board could supplement the minutes with additional materials or comments of things that transpired. But that would be a deviation from Robert's Rules and would, I think, necess, be necessary to have a separate vote on that.
Can I add something to that, Bob?
Can you hear him, Bob?
What was that, or can I, I can hear, yes.
Okay, so, so Bob, this was not a point of opinion at that point, this was a point of fact that was stated and I can read it, I can have a transcript of it that happened at that meeting. It's the only place that it was discussed in public before it was posted. So I, I don't, I don't consider that a, a point of opinion. And if you'd like me to read it to you for you, for your professional opinion, I'd have to do so.
My question is.
I would leave that to the pleasure of the board.
Would every report I give need to be transcripted?
No, but since those dates are so contentious right now, and that's such a big point of, of this whole discussion, I feel like it's important that that's the official record for that.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I don't think we need to have a transcript per se. Carol? I can read it to you if that helps. This is what, this is, I'll start, let's see. At minute, one minute thirty seconds, let's see. I'll just start. This is. Can I use the mic? Okay, I'll talk about. Okay, so, that's okay, I can, I can talk about. So this is, this is, probably not all of this needs to add, be added, but I think that specific dates need to be added. Here's the transcript, the vacant swallow area representative seat that needs to be filled as required by law and outlined in our policy through an application and interview process through which this board votes. Will vote on, on that and the results, will appoint someone into a temporary position, sorry. Then, if that appointed board member wishes to retain that seat, he or she will need to run in the annual April election for school board members. The vacant board seat and application process will be posted to the public for at least ten days per law on our website, beginning on or around July twenty-first. And also in the Lake Country Down newspaper applications, which we do on August sixth at noon, interviews being held during a special board meeting on the evening of August eleventh, that same night. The interviewed new board member will be sworn in and immediately will begin serving on the Arrowhead School Board. Like with that, I mean, kind of like, because it had to be transferred, right? Perbatim, you know, but if it's, talk about key, it's a stuff.
I agree, it's very confusing, you know, that just that we added date, it was set in stone, and then no board members knew about the change except for Kent and Laura.
Okay. I'm a kind of a traditionalist, I kind of like reading things as they've been for a long time. If there's a reason for an exception in this one case, I'm fine, I guess, but I wouldn't want to make this standard practice.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. All right, glad it's that. Still just speaking. For Tim, how do you feel?
Yes. I, I think the dates have become critical enough to be fair to include all references to those key dates in the minutes. And for the sake of full disclosure to the board, I was aware of the change in the dates, and made aware of that by Kent. I think a few hours before the August sixth deadline passed. So just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that that occurred.
Okay, so what the, if you'll mark my next step. All right, so we have changes to July fourteenth being and. Hey, for the discussion, I'll move to minutes. Approving events as amended for the July fourteenth, I'm sorry, July fourteenth regular board meeting, July fourteen special board meeting, and August eleventh special board meeting. Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. Okay, Carrie. All right, we also have a special meeting minutes from the August eighteenth special board meeting, we have a motion to approve those.
Oh.
A second.
Correct.
Okay, we move in seconds to approve the events for the August eighteen special board meeting. Any discussion of? All right, not all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Okay. Resilience approved, though, unless there is none. Superintendent's report.
So board members, the agenda you see before you is rather unique compared to ones that we typically have, because there are so many motions involved. So I wanted to walk through the purpose of those various motions, see, I have previewed what is the intention for the agenda, those action items. Attorney Bob Butler and his colleague Dan Mallon, who was with us via phone last meeting, they wrote the motions, they looked at our policies before doing so, they figured out the correct order of those, those motions. So I just wanted to talk through those and explain a little bit about the, one of the motions, motion number eight under policy that's about our new non-discrimination in the curriculum. So I'll explain that a bit too. So for board members, if you look ahead on the agenda, which is under policy, and obviously we'll look through the whole agenda, but under policy, discussion and action to suspend the application of policy one thirteen, filling board, board vacancies, specifically the phrase, "The process of appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within sixty days of vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined." That's allowing the board to move forward with their timeframe suspended. The law says you need to have a policy or a procedure in place to repeat, to replace the vacant board seat within the process in sixty days. And our policy says have that established in sixty days. So that's the first motion, and provided that a procedure, a different procedure is determined. The second motion is also a suspension of procedure one thirteen, specifically the phrase, "Board president shall determine which candidate wins the tie as it pertains to the August eleventh, twenty twenty-one tie vote on candidates, provided a policy and procedure are determined." So another procedure determination is coming up. The fourth proposed action item is to modify procedure one thirteen, filling board vacancies as applied to the board vacancy that arose in June of twenty twenty-one, and to service the policy for filling such a vacancy. So the link. Sorry, I'm just moving my computer screen up. When board members open that link, and I've given you a hard copy at your spot, you can see the darker grays, what's highlighted. This would be a procedure that the board would be potentially approving, written by the attorneys. So this procedure would come into play for just tonight, just related to this filling of the board vacancy. And you'll see in that document, the first portion of it, the procedure would be additional attempts to appoint by majority vote prior to re-initiating any procedures. So tonight, the date is noted, a board member may bring up a motion, which actually on that long list is number six, but we're putting it right in the temporary procedure document for tonight. Someone can make a motion to appoint a specific candidate that would be voted on, and if the person receives five votes, the majority of sitting board members, that they would be appointed to fill the temporary seat, and it would be all if the candidate that's brought up, and maybe two candidates will be brought up in a motion. If they do not receive the majority of the seated board, if they do not receive five votes, then that candidate would not be appointed, and then we would move on with the rest of the procedure as written by the attorneys. It's actually our typical, very close to our typical procedure that we've had in place. Other than it's been added, the deadline, if we re-initiate the process, would be Tuesday, September seventh. I double-checked that Tuesday, it's September seventh at noon. And then we would move on with that process being re-initiated. So item number four is the actual item to modify, to use this procedure tonight. Motion number five is an actual item to direct the implementation of this procedure modified for tonight. And it says with or without any board adopted modifications, so there obviously can still be discussion or change. And then number six, possible consideration of one or more motions to appoint a qualified elector to fill the board vacancy that arose on June twenty, twenty twenty-one. So that's going back to the top of that procedure document. If someone is voted in by five votes, it's done. If not, then there'd be an action item number seven. Or no, actually, if no one's voted in, then we consider, then we continue with the procedure as outlined. So we would repost that vacancy. Applications would be due September seventh. And presumably we'll hold a meeting to interview candidates, go through that process again. I'm thinking, I think we've conferred before the next regular board meeting, so it would be maybe six o'clock on September eighth, before the regular board meeting. It would be the interviews, if I need to go there. And then finally, motion seven, eight, and nine are, are separate from all of those other ones. The first six all go along with all these changes and procedural, procedures that we're trying to clean up. Number seven, it's going back to policy one thirteen and procedure one thirteen, but that would be changing our policy as the policy committee discussed. But that would be changing our policy as the policy committee discussed that last Thursday. So this would be making those policy changes and those procedure changes moving forward. And that's what the motion specifically says, effective prospectively and is applied to vacancies first arising after August 23rd. Number eight is an action item to approve new policy 333, non-discrimination in curriculum. And that was another discussion at Thursday's policy committee meeting where the board did some writing of a new policy. The board members opened that policy. You'll see, it should reflect your conversation at that Tim Langer and Craig Thompson were charged with continuing figuring out the wording. I was involved with some emails accordingly. And so we have this revised policy for the board to review and to make any reporting changes necessary and to hopefully adopt tonight. As a reminder, I think all of, all of you were in the policy committee meeting, but as a reminder for you and for the public to understand, this policy called non-discrimination within the curriculum is specifically noting that our curriculum will not it's confirming that our district curriculum will conform with the non-discrimination statement and policy of our district. It also says, "Nothing in Arrowhead High School curriculum shall promote or advocate for the following." And it goes through some of the language that have been high concerns regarding similar language to CRT. So teachers shall not promote or advocate for those components. And then finally, the third item on the policy was added to be very specific about CRT. Because that is a hot topic right now, and I think that's an area of concern. So we wanted to put it for, wanted to put it right in there. A body of legal scholarship popularly known as critical race theory has in many aspects advocated beliefs that are in direct conflict with the foregoing non-discrimination policy. So everything noted above. And thus, these respects would not be an acceptable element of the curriculum under this policy. So I wanted to kind of foreshadow that before the board goes through that whole big law policy committee area and before comments for the public, so you understand, I guess, where we're headed and rather unusual. It just, any more motions than what we would typically have. And then finally, just to end my superintendent report, I'd like to share some words of thanks and praise for our wings ceremony. Our freshman orientation program wings happened Wednesday, Thursday, Friday mornings. It was awesome. We had over 500 students, our incoming freshmen participate. The teachers that volunteer their time is, it's just amazing how many staff members helped with the planning. And our student mentors, about 70 students give up their summertime to plan that event and make it valuable for our incoming freshmen. Lots of fun learning, team building, really learning what Arrowhead is about. And after now six years, this is my seventh year after seeing freshmen come in in this district as compared to my last district where there was a two-hour freshman orientation. It's night and day difference. Kids come in and they met friends already. They're comfortable with the school and how we function. They've got team building. So I just really want to give thanks and praise to our committee that plans wings and it's done such a great job for all these seniors. Thank you.
I'd like to add that we were studying about the wings program. I was there Wednesday morning. And it was led by, by seniors as a, as a master ceremony. And several seniors talked to the, to the students, like I said, I think there were about 70 students who participated in the wings program. A whole lot of faculty members and so on. The drum line was there performing for the kids, the pop pop squad was there, cheerleader squad was there. Wally was there, all the warhawk was there, which is exciting time. I mean, you see, I mean, you know, these kids kind of come in looking like zero in the headlights almost. And it's just, it's amazing to see what the, what these kids are, how they're presenting themselves next up as, as seniors and the experience that they've shared with Arrowhead experience going forward in their senior year. So it's very heartwarming. Thank you, Laura. So at this time, we're going to go through the committee reports, going to go rather quickly. Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Got ahead of myself. Not going to eliminate public comments, don't get excited. Okay, the last two meetings, you know, our, what's published in our pamphlet as far as our meetings speaks about a three-minute timer for public comments. In June, we suspended that. In July, we suspended again. In July, we didn't get done with public comments till 10:40 PM. We still had a, we had a regular board meeting to actually conduct at that point. We adjourned after midnight. We didn't finish our meeting. We had to pace it up at our next point, our next meeting, just because of the time constraint. So we're going to be doing this evening, if we're going to go back to our three-minute rule. However, I'm going, we're going to extend it to five minutes. We're asking you to speak for three. And once the three-minute timer goes off, I will. I will let you know it's a three-minute warning. At five minutes, I'll ask you to please stop because it exceeds five minutes. So we're just trying to move this along. We've got about nine people, I think, that eight people looks like have signed up to speak. So with that, I'm going to invite Dr. Wendy Pelter to speak to us.
Yeah, I have heard different topics. I'm possibly a little bit confused by Laura. Am I able to speak to my version?
Yes.
It's a question. So I am here today wearing a mask.
Dr. Pelter, could you, you maybe, you know, post a board's waiting area, especially if you're outside.
So I'm, I'm here today wearing a mask and I'm not wearing a mask for myself. I'm wearing it for all of you.
Because I.
Public, public, public comments, Eric, public comments can be on any topic. Someone chooses to speak.
I find this to be very.
Don't have to be a junkie.
I find this to be very important and I won't play. I'm going to be. So I took care of free patients dying of COVID-19 in the hospital. I am here to thank for my mask to be this, me having a mask, because we now know that the Delta is. Yes, it's right. So even though I'm vaccinated, I can bring in new COVID-19 if I want to. And I'm just here to keep to the board to help me understand what the threshold might be to revisit your policy, which currently has no mitigation strategies against COVID as far as I can tell. So I just want to know how many people need to be in the hospital. Right now, radar has declared a fourth surge of COVID. We have over 100 people in the hospital after having less than 10 people in the hospital in June. But your policies are made that he. Also, I don't see any information about how people know if there is a COVID outbreak here at Arrowhead High School. Because my understanding of your policy is you're not going to require tests or quarantine or any way to monitor them. So I'm not going to take too much time on your agenda. I'm just a physician of 25 years. I'm a member of this community. I love the school. I love my family. And I wish that the pandemic wasn't. But it's not. And the Delta strain is eight times more contagious than regular COVID. So all your strategies last year worked beautifully and you didn't have an outbreak here. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around the fact that with that data, that Jackson needed people to spread it and that it's eight times more contagious. Why there isn't a little sort of urgency about monitoring this in some way? So I'm not going to speak to the other topics. I didn't take the time to get that to. I'm just. A pen strike. Bryce asked me to just make a comment. Our, our board did decide back in June to have masks optional, to not have close contact quarantines required. If someone's tested positive for COVID, then it would be required to be quarantined or isolated when you're ill. And you can come back to school. Students could come back after a negative test or after doctors note explaining that it wasn't COVID, it was allergies, for instance. When it comes to close contacts, our staff members will still be notifying parents. So let's say either Donna or Craig ends up COVID positive and they're sitting next to each other in class. We would be letting students know, Donna would get a letter at home saying, "Your child may have been a close contact with someone positive for COVID. Please watch for symptoms." We wouldn't be mandating a quarantine. In terms of how will the board make decisions, as superintendent, I'm meeting with all superintendents and our Rockshott County Public Health Department every single Wednesday. And so similar to what I did this morning in an email, gave some data, I will continue to do those updates. So at any point the board decides something's not going well, and especially when our school opens, if we see cases within Arrowhead's site and there may need to be some sort of change in your protocols. I'll keep you every single week posted on that. And then that's the board's decision if you want to meet to talk over those mitigation strategies or not.
Still have the number of cases on that side.
Yes, good question. Daryl asked to find the website if I'll still be keeping track in that chart of how many cases. And I'll do that. I'll be modifying the chart to tape up how many quarantines because we're not doing close contact quarantines. But the positive bases will be there.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pelter. John Norcross. Thank you, John Norcross. I walked with the parents of two, two students here at Arrowhead. I'm going to be going away from my prepared remarks. They were, I guarantee you eloquent and, and a work of art. I appreciate the gravity and respect we began this meeting with. I think we only remind ourselves that for the past 20 years, we have twelve thousand. Real ones, and it is two-hour eternal shame and detriment. And so when I saw the policy here, I was outraged, seems to be contagious. I have, as I said, I've got two boys and they're applying to university. And I have to wonder what brand this school is sending out into the world. July, July 14, Bastille Bay, all that. Kevin Nicholson and no better friend, the stealth political campaign, far-right group, stood here and made a political stump speech about this manufactured issue of critical racism. And then he took a link to that video and started promoting it on social media. When our, the name of our school was lazed upon it and that is sending a terrible, terrible brand out to the world of that before. Unprompted, reach out to me from the UK, from Europe. We now have to say, make that decision, unfortunately, Canada and the Caribbean, what is going on with the schools in your state? What is, is this real, John? And unfortunately, it is. This is, this is very bad policy. And it's sending, again, in a way, as it seeks to avoid racism, it is, it is embedding systemic racism into a policy. We could have chosen sexual orientation or gender. Instead, we chose critical race theory, which we can't even define. So I have to say that I, I, I don't know what, what this point can do, but I want to be the voice that says, this is bad policy. We have to do better. I don't want to see this on weak parents of YouTube. So please don't post that.
Public meeting.
You don't want me up there. I don't want it up there, because I don't want to be associated with your entity.
So thank you. You're here. Fantastic. You're going to be on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. And Anderson.
Is that a paper or was that a press? So, so I just want to address both the public and the board. And, and I know I speak for a lot of people, we've had a lot of conversations since the last board meeting that was in the theater last week. And, and my concern is around the integrity of the process of filling the boards. Right? And so as Chris pointed out and quoted and had added to the minutes, the date, the, the application deadline was very clearly stated. And it seems, and I'm just saying optics, right? So let's talk about the optics from the board to the community that you serve. The optics are that that date was changed behind the black curtain. For, that the other board members weren't included. They weren't notified. They weren't asked. They weren't even query whether or not that was acceptable. And nobody in the public, after the first date was put out, was notified that, hey, we've got a little bit of a problem. We're going to change the date. And the optics of that are, they come off a shape. I'm just being honest and transparent. And that's concerning to me because I feel like the integrity of this board is extremely critical to the reputation of the school, our students, and the community. This is all for Mr. President is for you to tell us why the decision was made to change the date, even though we have one applicant that followed the process, followed the procedure, and got her application in on time without even notifying the rest of the board. I feel like we're going to need an explanation.
I do believe, Cam, that that explains some, several occasions. Go explain it again. The date was incorrectly noted on our website for about three days, three or four days, as Monday, August 6. It had been published in the newspaper as Friday, August 6. When we discovered, when it was discovered that it was improperly noted on the website as Monday, the 6. Byron was on a town vacation on the West Coast. When she found out about it, it was corrected on the website to properly reflect, properly reflect the original Friday, the 6th date. Okay? And it was a decision made, this was probably a week and a half before, two weeks before.
It was like August 2nd.
Around August 2nd, four days, okay, sorry. About four days prior to the, prior to the expiration of Friday. To change it back to the 6th, okay, Friday, the 6th. And the decision was made because we didn't know how many people in the public may have seen the fact it was Monday, the 6th instead of Friday, the 6th. And I know if I see something that says Monday, the 6th or whatever, I, I, I see Monday. I don't see the 6th. I don't, I don't check the, the same day, okay? And we made, made the decision that since it had said Monday, we're here on the side side of caution, extended to Monday. We couldn't get it in the paper because the paper's only published on Wednesdays. We couldn't get that done in time to do that. So that was the reason that was moved to, to, to Monday. It was an oversight. She was out of town. I'll be honest with you, it was an honest mistake. I showed contact to board members. I was a law model, thanks as well, and it didn't get done. And it was, Tim, as, as Tim mentioned, he'd heard about it. There was an oversight on our part. It wasn't as if on Friday, we decided to change it to, to Monday. It had been done four days or so earlier.
True, you called the candidate after the deadline. He recruited the candidate. She never had been called on the next day, 11:45.
In the board meeting last week, I believe, Laura, you indicated that after the deadline, phone calls were made to interest candidates.
No, I said that the Friday time was noon. And I had multiple board members, I had multiple board members contact me late Friday morning and ask, do we have any candidates? And at that time, we did not have any candidates. The first applicant applied at, I think it was 10:47 or 11:47, I apologize. So about 13 minutes before the deadline. I had told board members, we don't have any applicants. I don't know. I don't know who or what board members or community members or staff members were still out recruiting. I just said, "Before that deadline, we had no applicants."
So last week's board meeting specifically talked about phone calls that tents had made to applicants that were interested. When were those phone calls made?
Those phone calls were made Friday afternoon.
After the deadline?
After what was perceived on that Friday. Yes, I was.
So my point is, is we had an applicant that got her stuff in on time. And yet we went and extended the deadline and recruited after that deadline. It just, listen, all I'm saying is the optics to the community are horrible. For the transparency, and Chris talked about transparency all the time. And I completely agree with you because integrity is always standing. And it doesn't feel like this was a decision or a process ran with the board. Just an observation, not pointing a finger, not holding anybody in the eye. Just telling the board how your community that you are elected to serve feels about your performance in this event.
I understand that and I appreciate that.
Anderson. All right, try to keep us going down. Tom Court.
Hey. I'll open my place. This kind of fired me up. This doctor here, this kind of goes. I know you guys have a lot of fish fry here legally or whatever you said that belong to CRT.
Procedurally.
Procedurally, yeah. I think what you did for our men and women, right? I served too. But you know the definition of war? Contention by force, right? Or the art of paralyzing the enemy by their forces, whether they be public or private. And the war that I'm talking about is exactly what that doctor talked about. It's what our kids, but listen, I lost two wars today. One with my superintendent, who is pressured by the teachers' union, that more than likely, they will, now that we have the FDA approval, which is false, that they're going to shoot up the kids or have them be mandated to take this experimental shot. That's the war I'm talking about. I don't know if I have a voice here, but I have a voice to try to say something, right? I've lost the fight down there with my daughter. And it sickens me to death. But the narratives are the same with each Board of Education that I listen to or talk to. You guys are stripped, you're pressured by the teachers' unions. Yes, you are. You know it. You are. It's a script. I've heard it. I've heard many of them. But I ask and I beg each and every one of you, you are an independent Board of Education. You can make your own decisions. There is an absolute, forgive my language, crap storm coming this fall. You're going to be pressured when the FDA comes down, when the teachers' union comes down, to shoot these kids up to ensure they come back to school. That's what's going to happen. You know it. You probably already got a game plan for it. You probably know it's coming down. But I beg of you, as a concerned parent, just, all these parents are probably concerned. Don't do it. I don't give a damn what they do with their kids or what they do. I'm just talking about in general. It's bad for the children. Why didn't that fine doctor have the audacity, if she's a physician, that took that Hippocratic oath? Why didn't they ask about where your D hydroxy-25 levels at? How about get your D up, get your zinc up, get some breaths? No, they want to skew these absolute rhetoric about mask mandates and the delta this, delta that. There ain't, come on. I'm just talking to you as a concerned parent. I would ask that you guys, when you come to that decision that's going to be coming to you at your back doors, I'm telling you, you're going to have to make a life or death decision here on that. That's going to be a war that you're going to have to face. It's going to battle that you're going to have, you're going to have to fight. And I hope we made the right decision for the children. I really do. Because it's going to be the wrong one if you say, "Yeah, we got to come back. We've got to mandate these kids come into school. They have to take this experimental supposed FDA shot." I hope that doesn't happen. But the pressure issues, man, that's secondary. I understand that that's a big thing, CRT is, which is this absolute sickening pastime. So is LGBTQ, all these other stuff that's going on. I could care less. I'm just talking about the kids and their health. But I ask that you guys really take a hard look at that if that comes down the pike, which it will. They're going to pressure you. I know how this works. You're going to be pressured. Especially now with the FDA supposedly approving this crap. I would just ask that you please, don't do it. Don't do it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Kim Clayton. Kim Clayton. I'm sorry. Happy to hear from you. We don't bite. Trevor DeBora. Trevor? Trevor, can you come up front here, please, so we can hear you, the board? Thank you.
That's not a white test, that's Trevor. I know. All right.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Trevor. I've spoken up here before. There's a lot of stuff going on. First gentleman that just spoke, thank you very much. Safe design, et cetera, in a nutshell, right there. Don't stick our kids. I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I don't hold myself to a party. It's not a party anyways we're having right now, this time. I'm an American. I've served 30 years in the military. I retired in April. I've served multiple tours over in Afghanistan. I didn't bring everybody home. Stayed. When I leave in the morning and I say goodbye to my kids, I come back a year later, not that night. My kids, when I get home, they're not taught to hate those people. They respect them. They respect them right now. People that are stranded over there, that are stuck there. They don't hate them. They don't talk down about them. Because I taught them in my home as a parent. Okay, I'm there. My wife's there teaching. I work in the inner city. Everybody sees what's going on on the news. Multiply that times 10 because the news isn't telling you everything. People are getting shot, murdered all the time, every single day. It wasn't too long ago, year and a half, two years ago, my partner was gone down right next to me. It was a painful day. I didn't bring them home. I came home that night, talking to my kids. They weren't taught to hate those people. They weren't taught to hate or race or gender. They were taught to respect them. Because that's what we teach them at home. In the last four months, I've been shot at four times in the inner city. My kids could easily hate those people. They don't. Because I teach them. My church teaches them to respect everyone. We don't need the schools teaching our kids about race and how to respect people. That's our jobs. We talk about the amount of people in the school, the last meeting, the budgets. The school body is going to drop significantly. If this starts getting taught in the school, or you start sticking my kid with a shot, our kids are gone. You'll get kicked out of school. This is a hoax. It's a political stunt. We brought up, yes, we do teach communism in schools. We do teach socialism in schools. To teach people what it is, or our kids what it is. Those are governing bodies. Those are countries that run off of socialism, that run off of communism. Heard of a race theory? It's not a government, it's not a government-run platform. They're trying to make it one. But it's not. Don't bring it up in my kids' school, in their classes. But they're gone. I won't. Because I'm going to come up here and again monitor all of you guys. Chris, I want to thank you for the amount of time we have on this board. It needs new blood on this board. We talk down home with people that have been here for two months. And it's ridiculous. Stop doing it. The last meeting was a complete debacle. And it was from people that have been here for 20 years. Thank you.
It's not a good public story, it's a silence. Yes, you'd like to come up with that, that's fine. Sorry for my leave. That's all right. Go on. Not a problem. We have a special lady here where they support people sign up to stay themselves.
Can I ask a point of clarification? I didn't quite understand if somebody that spoke, where they stood on the side so I can, so I can document it?
Sure. John Norcross?
He does.
He's in his cell. All right. Bear with us. All right, we're back. Our next speaker is Molly Sweeney, or Haley Sweeney.
My name is Kelly Sweeney. I have three kids, 98 seconds old. We recently moved the parochial school to their district and told our kids in a goal that we'd follow. I never planned on speaking tonight, but given the board meeting I did attend recently, I was very compelled to come forward and just talk about how embarrassed I was at the decorum, how the public, what of the board. So this is why I prepared. Now, I just wanted to say, Mr. Rice, if you did serve in the war, I thank you for your service. But as someone who has lost a family member in the Port Hood terrorist attack, I am just kind of disgusted that you would compare the atrocities of war to what's happening in our schools. I just find it very disrespectful. But this is just as important because this is the lives of our children. And to me, that is the most important thing. And that is what I focus on in my life, making a well-rounded, nice child. My family now moved our three children to the Arrowhead Public School system from the parochial school last year. I've been known to all that the world and schools my children have previously known would have actually shifted and drastically changed their lives forever. I can't say that the last year was without hiccup, but I always had in back of my mind that the Arrowhead school system were worth it and that it was a privilege to have my children be or have someday. That being said, as a taxpayer and a parent, specifically a swallow parent, who see directly represent my family, I am utterly disgusted and appalled at its decorum and incompetence of this board. As a new bystander, I attended my first open meeting with my children a few weeks ago. I think it's really important for our kids to be there and get involved, but also for board members to see who is being affected by your decisions. You can make your decisions. At the end of the night, you go home and you go to your dog, you live your life. But our kids are the ones that are going to be laying out at the hands of your policy. I had to explain to my children on the ride home, who were physically upset that the board president was threatening to call the sheriff within the first meeting of the moment. They had many questions. They were scared. They didn't really understand why. But they could sense and feel the tension in the room. I would add kindly that if you as board members cannot control or handle your emotions or handle the pressure of representing of the taxpayers, I ask that you respectfully resign. I'm embarrassed that, I'm embarrassed that board members do not know what the policies are and have led the issue of filling the vacant seats to this far and that this may issue. The deception is disappointing. And I'm not entirely sure why the superintendent has been playing such a pivotal role as well. But as a taxpayer and a swallow parent, I am disgusted, appalled, and wanting better for my community and most importantly, my children. I will do everything in my power to protect my community and my children and make sure that those of you who have clearly shown your incompetence no longer have a seat in the next election because you have lost my confidence, you've lost my vote, and the majority of you have lost my respect.
Thank you, Haley. I think you badly missed my comments about this aspect of that staff. I will back to.
I was offended. I was offended in source of it. But compared to our children, I think that's something.
That's not what was.
To those people who have lost, what I want, frontier protection.
I have lost a lot of friends also, Pam, okay? Okay, Kim Curry.
Hi, everybody. I think I was hearing a pretty loud voice. I just want to start by saying, it took a while. It really did take us a while, but we now see, like, we see very clearly. In the beginning, we were finding all the skeletons as dead bodies in the closet. That's what we were doing. But now we see it. We understand. We've learned. We're learning policy. We're learning procedure. And we are learning broader tools. And when we look at your agenda that is posted, now we see you're actually where you're going and what your roots are. And if I look back now to June, I can say it's clear as day you were just ignorant. But we are not going to be ignorant anymore. We have people on our teams that are attorneys that in our multiple areas of profession that can benefit us as a group and they will benefit us as a group. So I just want to say, we see you and we see it loud and clear. You just let you know that. The second I want to talk about my friend Julie and her applications to swallow speed. I am a swallow parent. And I believe that because she stood up here for the past five months and opposed masks and spoke about critical race theory and invoked her First Amendment right for freedom of speech, she is being retaliated against. And I find that repulsive. And it is clear to the community. And I assure you, in the election, she will be elected because we have a very broad reach and swallow. That is how we found out with Sir Rice, that you called so many people. Because there's a lot of people in our community that are close and that are friends and care for one another. So just so you know, that is going to happen. So if it doesn't happen today, it will happen in the future, in the coming months. But I'm also confident that come April or potentially before that, you guys are at risk of losing all of your seats. Now, it's the election, that's to be seen. But I am 100% committed to ensuring that the people on this board that are explicit to the actions will see some sort of outcome for that action. Then on critical race theory, the only thing I will say is I'm asking the board, this language, I agree, is actually across. It's very broad. It's extremely broad, and it does not allow, if I made, it does not allow the prevention of a teacher bringing any type of portentant of critical race theory through that lens in the classroom. Through open records, I was able to read about a teacher asking from a book about police brutality. Are you scared of the police? What do you talk about the police? What do your parents say about the police that call? I mean, the questions from, from a high school teacher, I found to be very leading, and they should be able to present both sides of the book, and they were extremely one-sided. And I also saw that black light sign on the front. There has to be two sides to an issue, and I think all these divisive issues really need to be out of the classroom. Very leading, and critical race theory is very hard to pin down. I've educated myself on this subject, and that's why it's very hard to put a ban on it, because it comes through the lens of the teacher. And I don't know how you stop that, except for something like Waukesha High School did today. And I sent that to Craig Thompson and to Langer, because I think that is something that has to go out to the administration, to the teachers, about what you do not want in the classroom. I think it needs to be clear and concise, and I do not think this is, because the words equity, for example, are rooted in Marxism, and equity does not equal equality, and that is a core tenet of CRT. So just having that word in itself is a problem. So, I don't, I don't agree with this policy at all, I think it needs to be amended, and it needs to be more clearer. And I think there's a lot of people here that have done a lot of due diligence on critical race theory, and I also think that if you had a town hall, or something of that nature, I think it could get the community to actually agree to some of these things. Because no one's asking solidarly history, no one's asking not to teach empathy, or race, or culture. What we're asking is to remove the divisiveness of some of the language that we're putting here. And so ideology, it doesn't belong in the classroom, it's very good at all.
Thank you, Jim. Joe Lundy.
Gerald Lundy. I'll make a few different points, not in any necessary order, I had COVID.
Gerald, can you turn this way a little more please, thank you. Or step back.
My symptoms were flu-like, fever, whatever. My daughter was in an R and told me to go to the ER, so I did. I, I did my time, and I got the medication, that's fine. That's very good. Got into my lungs, created some panic, you know. COVID-19 is a flu. It's been misrepresented to something else that kills people. The flu kills old people every year, and hence for the last hundred years. I don't want to hear about masks unless they're valid, and I'm sure 99% of the people here feel the same way. With regard to this election, it reminded me of Congress and Nancy Pelosi, for all the gyrations you folks went through to try to manipulate this into something, to make it look like it's official. It's garbage. If that young lady had her stuff yet on Friday the 6th, 6th was the operative number, not the day of the week. Because she would have missed the 6th, then that would have been her fault. So there was a lot of suggestions made here by the board in previous meetings, to move, to accept her. She has yet to be done. I feel she should have got the job, but that's only my opinion. With regard to CRT, I distributed enough information to this board to educate them in a general sense of what CRT is. And I know nothing about CRT from, you know, it wasn't even talked about last year. Now it's starting coming up and creeping up and infiltrating everything. Look at Loudmun School District in Virginia, that's the biggest piece of garbage on earth. Most people should all fuck. So, think carefully, and restructure the language, and make it very clear and concise, and it can't be misconstrued for anything. Equity, you want equity by real estate, you want equality, you read the Constitution.
Maybe Gerald. Step past you. That would recommend that you're not yelling, or screaming, and shaking your arms if this means you want to do that one, please.
Mr. President, I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Those kind of sending comments, you have no place in school.
There was no place for your actions.
I'm not talking about last week, sir, I'm not, I've got the board's comments. So I appreciate it in some respects. It's not interesting, sir, I have the floor, please. I, I, I'm looking at the message from the Office of Open Government that says, "It is imperative that we recognize that transparency is the cornerstone of democracy, and that citizens cannot hold elected officials accountable in a representative government, unless government is performed in the open." It also goes on to say, "Wisconsin Open Government Law is promote democracy by ensuring that all state, regional, and local governments conduct their business with transparency. Wisconsin citizens have a right to know how their government is spending their tax dollars, and exercising the powers granted by the people. The guide is a resource for everyone to understand and exercise their right to access their government." On July 14th, 2021, everyone, the board, superintendent, I don't know what all these people, but I'm addressing the board, were at a meeting, and which was stated, that the deadline date for candidates to put in their paperwork for the vacancy at swallow that was left by Bob Roche was August 6th, 2021, at noon. Not Monday, August 6th, not Friday, August 6th, not Thursday, August, August 6th. At that time, a posting was put out. It's my understanding that you guys, I don't know if you've done it yet, do not have August 6th as the deadline stated in your minutes. And you don't have it because you find that to not be pertinent information to keep within those minutes. That's not open government, that's hiding for something that happened in the past. Furthermore, the president of the board has no right, unless the board has specifically granted that power, to say that they're going to extend the deadline, and I'm going to tell you why. Because if that was allowed in the open government law, you have to state it so that I can be there to see it, because I'm a constituent of this school district, so you cannot conduct government business without posting, unless you specifically feel you meet an exemption for the open records law, which would be done in closed session. Furthermore, I never have heard this board vote to extend a deadline beyond August 6th, 2021. I've heard arguing in a bunch of discussion during a superintendent's report where no discussion should happen. I've heard, seen a ballot get sent out on video, I've seen a ballot given out. But my point is, in open government, the president can't just extend the date. The superintendent, unless specifically given the power by the board, cannot just extend the date. Many of you, I do feel, are getting false information, and you need to stick to what authorities you have as elected officials. If you have to have a quorum vote to pass someone to fill a seat, but one person can change a vote to put themselves in the position to create a tie, and then be saying, "Just like Vegas, double or nothing, let's do it again, because now I've got it guaranteed." You can't, that's not open government, that is not open government, it's not fair. Anybody telling you it's fair is lying to you, I guarantee it, you don't have to believe it. People are watching, I will do everything in my power to make sure that this is exposed if it doesn't stop, because it is wrong. And Mr. Rice, as you threw your comments, I saved mine for the end. If you actually think that that's fair, and just, and true, of a man who has taken his oath to decide it on their own, not tell anyone on the board, that's part of your duties, in the policies of a, of a president of a school board, to get the pertinent information to the board. If that information wasn't pertinent, then it was being hidden. If it was pertinent, it had to be posted to the public, because the posting said Friday, August 6th, 2021, at noon. It wasn't posted to the public, you have to post. I hope you all at least agree with that, because any candidates that asked me if they could go and put their paperwork in from the swallow district, they didn't get to put theirs in on Saturday, or Sunday, or Monday in the morning, when you had to post saying August 6th, at noon. So how many people, you're talking about one person, you're afraid of disenfranchising one person that just didn't meet a deadline, but you're willing to disenfranchise 4,000? It's not open government, that's my point, it's not open. All this charade, this nonsense of the confusion they're causing, is simply to stop you from actually exercising the authorities that you have as school board members. First point of course, you are each representatives of the people, certain for districts and other members at large. You're our representatives. Be willing to stand up for the people, because that's who you represent, that's all representative.
Thank you, Joe. Heidi Murphy.
I wanted to talk on two things. First, this gets August 6th. And I thought this over in my head, I've gone over and over and over, and said, okay, what would a rational person do if they found out that it said Monday, August 6th? My first thought was, well, I'm gonna let it roll, and see if anyone turns in an application on August 6th. Have board members call me, and I'm gonna say, hey, we haven't gotten one yet, we haven't gotten one yet. And if that date comes and goes, then I come back to the board the next week and say, you know what, we didn't have anybody to apply. And I don't think anybody here will be at all shocked by that. I would want to take this job, this environment. Every single taxpayer that would have said, oh man, I can't believe nobody applied, that's awful, you didn't do your job. But you didn't let it roll, you didn't let it just go by. And then if you were that worried about somebody that saw it on the website for Monday, a rational person would have said, alright, let's let that date come and go. Let's see if anybody comes in the door and applies on their own, without a phone call, without reaching out to let them know it was gonna be extended, let's just see what happens, so that we don't disenfranchise that person. And again, come back to the board and say, hey, this is what happened. We had one that came in here, and we had one that came in on Monday. What do you as a board think you should do about that? But you didn't do that. You decided to better work, and start making phone calls. Instead of letting the one application go, or even letting it roll the Monday, and see if there was anybody in the universe that was gonna apply because they saw it on Monday. And had you done that again, this entire collective would have been on board with that. If you came to that meeting and said, this is what happened, okay? We let it roll, we decided to see if anybody was gonna be disenfranchised, and I'm willing to bet, there wasn't going to be anyone disenfranchised. And you would never be in this position right now, to hear it, that you have to have legal counsel on the phone to help you figure out how to manipulate the policy, so that you're not in violation. And it's not just one person. It's embarrassing. I talked to my 14-year-old daughter. The upfront transparent, we are pulled out of this school, and is attending a different school right now. And I was telling her why I wasn't gonna be home, because I was gonna come to the meeting last week, the Monday meeting, and this. And I was explaining to her, everything that was going on, all the gyrations of changing this policy and changing that policy, and we have to have the agenda items listed exactly like this, so that when we change this policy, it's okay for us, and then change that policy. And she looked at me and she said, first of all, ma'am, are they six? Because this sounds like playground tag, where you get tagged, and you're mad that you got tagged, so you decide to make up a new rule and say, hey, you can't take somebody in purple on Tuesday, so that you can't be it. And then she followed that up with, you know, this has nothing to do with why I left that school, but I am so glad that I am no longer associated with it, because that's embarrassing. And that's for 14-year-old, that finds it embarrassing to be associated with a group of people that can't follow their own policy. And for the board members that were not notified, I would say, that your reputation and your integrity have taken a huge hit, no call the year old. You shouldn't have let it ride, you shouldn't have just let it go and see what happened that added to the board the following week. But you didn't. And now you're in your second meeting trying to undo the crap that happened, because you couldn't let it ride. And the only assumption you can make is that there is a reason for not having let it ride. Because if you just let it go, you would have either had no candidates, one candidate, or you would have been up front with everybody at the exact same time. And the fact that you did not notify anybody else about that expansion, folks tear up. You have a skywork system, I did emails from it all the time. You could have sent one out saying, hey, we had a mistake, we're gonna extend it. I'm confident swallow has a skywork system or something similar, that could have gone out to all of the swallow parents. You could have put a big announcement on the front page of your website saying, hey, we made this mistake, we're extending it so that everybody knows. None of those things happened, and that is just terrible. And it's terrible to expect all of us to be okay with that. But then moving on, I'm looking at your non-discrimination thing. And the one question I have on it, is that letter C here, where it says that if bidwrote by virtue of sex, race, ethnicity, so on and so forth.
Heidi, I tell you, Sharon, for a moment, you're approaching over five minutes here, so if you please.
I will write about her with. Are inherently responsible for actions committed by other unrelated members? Why are they responsible for anything? Why does it say unrelated members? Why does that just say they're not responsible for anybody else's actions? And the last thing is, I would respectfully request you to look at my act from the Waukesha School District, and what was sent out to their staff and teachers, and have that same thing happen here at Arrowhead. Last year during the election, and the only pictures that were on the wall were all Democrats. There is no way that that is not advocating in the classroom, and telling those kids what they need to say, and how they need to think. And that is all for justice here.
Hi guys. Todd Jones.
Yeah. First, thank you for letting me address the, the board, appreciate that. Step back to follow, Heidi, my friend Heidi here. I know, but I'm gonna repeat a lot of the things here. I think the first thing I will say though, is I think it's a mistake to think that any of us that are coming up here are necessarily associated with the Facebook page. I'm not, okay? So let's not just think it's one group that's carrying water, which is totally not that case. We as parents, we are concerned, the eyes are upon us, and I mean, and us, it comes to you. Now, my text is a little different here, okay? I'm not gonna talk about the swallow scene, not gonna talk about critical race theory, and I'm not gonna talk about folk. I'm gonna talk about governance, and what governance means, and what good governance. I live and breathe it every day, my work life, my volunteer board activity life, I know what good governance is. And I want everybody to ask themselves, are we witnessing good governance? I think when it comes to appropriate governance, it's about following the rules, okay? And it is about transparency, it is not about trying to achieve specific desire or purpose, okay? And when you make the decisions that you do tonight, when you vote on things, I'd like each of you to ask yourselves, do you believe that both of these are truly being achieved, or are they being forced upon? Look at the agenda, I think you've seen the agenda. The suspend, four times, the word suspended in the, in the agenda. Modify is in there twice, amend is once, so think about that. Talk about this procedural, it's not, it's about spending procedure, doing what we want to, the board wants to in that regard. The time to change the rules is not when you're deep in the rules, okay? The rules are put in place for a reason. When there's times of discord, that these are gonna be applied the way that they should be. And I ask yourselves, when you're changing, what message are you sending to the community? What message are we sending for our children? The answer isn't what we want it to be, we will change the rules and make it what we want it to be. And then there's no doubt in, in there, and I, I still can't find your kim or somebody, there's carefully crafted language to suspend this, amend that, this is all meant, and you have the lawyer on the line, to talk about legitimizing the actions that have been put in place, because then the answer can be voted on. the actions that have been put in place because then the answer can be voted on or approved it. So I think shouldn't really dismiss what we're, what we're saying. We do understand what's going on, okay? We do. And this is about achieving desired outcomes, desired outcome for as well as far as what the next vote. Not just this. I don't think that I'll change anybody's minds tonight, but it will be interesting. We'll all be on record with these votes, what you think and what you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And our final speaker, Ginger Smith.
I am the past mayor in this school district. I am the starting speaker tonight. I've got a cut in my mouth. I was at the last four board meetings and over and over it was that, that at 11:47 or 11:45 in the morning, August 6th, there were no candidates. Of course, we all know that by 11:50 that morning, there was a candidate, a great candidate. So my question to especially Kat, and I don't expect an answer, this is rhetorical. When you recruited, made phone calls for recruiting, did you say, did you understand that the, the deadline is Monday? Because I don't think you found anyone who was confused by that. As Heidi said, a, a 14-year-old can look at a date and say, wow, Monday isn't perfect. Or if they can't figure it out, they probably shouldn't be on the board. If in fact, no one was confused by the date, and I believe that to be true, then all of that rigmarole is null and void. And any of you that don't vote for the ballot longtime candidate are not honorable and do not have integrity.
Thank you, Ginger. Uh, that ends the communications, uh, public comment section. I will move in with the reports. So three reports, we have the report from Scrako. None from finance legislation. Same with building grounds, no reports. Nothing on personnel, uh, policy. Two persons, Ginger, reported August 19th.
Well, Laura already kind of laid out the when she gave her speech, she kind of talked about all of these. And I don't know if you want me to repeat them. Discussion and action to suspend the application of policy 113 filling board vacancies. Specifically the phrase, the process of appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days of the vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined. I believe we have.
I think the first item was the, just the, uh, policy.
Oh, the report.
Yes.
Okay. Moving ahead, sorry. On Thursday, August 19th, many of you are here that are in the board, you are here to, to hear what we went through during the policy meeting. Uh, there is no board action that need to, that needs to be done to accept it or not. It's just a report that as to what we did during the, the meeting. We talked about critical race theory. We talked about the board vacancies and also about the newspaper. And those are going to come up later on in this, um, in this section. Yes. Bob, do you have anything to say about the process of appointment within 60 days?
Could you hear?
Yeah, just, okay. Yes, I can hear. Yeah, just from a standpoint of if you, the board takes no action, then the issue defaults to the existing policy and procedure, which would still remain open, the respective candidacies and the party, the board would have to determine that standpoint, you know, the standing of individuals, but the, in, the existing procedure would be enacted, which would require the president to make a selection. And the president would have to decide are there two candidates to select from or one?
So that's board action. So we need to take a vote on whether to suspend the application policy 113 filling board vacancies.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. So the first action item we have coming out of this is to suspend the application of policy 113 filling board vacancies, specifically the phrase, the process of appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days of the vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined. In other words, state law, our, our current policy has writ is more stringent than state law. State law requires, after advice from attorney Butler, state law requires not that it be accomplished, but that there be a procedure in place within 60 days to appoint a new board member, not to actually, not to appoint somebody that have, have that procedure process in place within 60 days. So the first, the first thing we're asking, questioning as, as Bob's Butler's recommendation is to, um, suspend that phrase in the policy to I'll just re-read it. To suspend the application of policy 113 filling board vacancies, specifically the phrase, the process of appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days of vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined. In other words, if we suspend it, then we also need to come up with a replacement, which is farther down. We have a motion to that effect.
I make the motion to suspend the policy.
Hey, we have a motion to suspend the policy, particularly the phrase, appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days of vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Ken.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Ben, Tim. Any discussion?
Clarify then, uh, so we are moving that we align ourselves more clearly with state law. This policy, that's correct.
That is correct.
Can I make a clarification? So is it, this is for going forward past what we're talking about here? Correct? This, this has nothing, no impact on the motion that Amy has on the, on the board or on the floor right now and says, no, no. This is just moving forward. Correct?
This, this motion is for right now because we're past 60 days. But this won't have any effect on my motion. No, see if the candidate who got their. Correct.
Um, if, if I could, please comment. Thank you. If, if I could have the floor for a moment, please?
You've got it, Bob.
Ken? Okay. Yeah, I just wanted, in response to the question, if this motion does not pass, then it's our opinion that you would default to the existing procedure, which then you're in the spot as to whether a vote on one candidate in isolation would be appropriate. So in order to get to a situation where the motion to put forward on one candidate could be the potential procedure, you would need to suspend the existing default policy.
Understood. Understand that? Okay. Did we have a second?
And, Ken, I, I understand my colleagues on the board are being very cautious as to which motions and policy changes that they would want to, uh, consider and approve. And I had spent a fair amount of time reviewing exactly what was being proposed item by item. A hundred percent agree with what Bob has to say.
Thank you, Tim. Tim said effectively that, uh, he spent a lot of time looking at every, every one of these portions after sequence there. A hundred percent agree with Bob. Can I state that correctly, Ken?
Yeah, and to be perfectly clear on this, that Amy's motion for, that's being carried over from our last meeting is much what we'll be doing tonight, the way of modifying, uh, ordinary practices to make room for that motion. And this is the first of those steps.
Right. There's really no motion being carried over because it was not, wasn't a proper motion because it wasn't, wasn't noted on the agenda. But we're making room, there will be, we'll have to make that motion later, if you're right. This is kind of setting that up.
And I think we all understand what motion that was, right?
So this allows for any motion later. Yes, sir.
It's the, it's the first of a few steps, I think. Um, would confirm that you're necessary in order to consider that motion.
Correct. Okay. Any other further discussion?
We've lost video on the set.
I'm sorry, Tim?
We've lost video from the board.
Oh, you have? Okay. Um, so is the motion on board to suspend the application of policy 113 filling board vacancies, specifically the phrase, the process of appointment will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days of vacancy, provided a policy and procedure are determined. All those voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry it. Second motion, discussion and action to suspend the application of policy 113 filling board vacancies, specifically the phrase, order of primality in terms of which candidate wins the tie as it pertains to the August 11th, 2021 tie vote on candidates, provided a policy and procedure are determined. So what this is, is a motion to, um, suspend the force of the policy where the president would, would bring the tie specifically for the August 11th, 2021 vote or meeting. It pertains specifically to the August 2021 meeting. Maybe you.
I make the motion.
Okay. Motion being approved, second? If, maybe second, Michael. Any discussion?
So this with respect to the August meeting. This allows the president from making the tie. Is that correct? It suspends, yes, it suspends that statement. So that would, I would not be ready, um, maybe the, I would not be ready to tie. Yes. Thank you.
So my, my contention here is that, uh, this is, this is making a statement that, um, we are basically agreeing that there are two candidates. And I've checked to that, I think we only have one candidate. That's, that's my whole contention. I do like the idea of suspending the application, uh, for the tie, but there really is no tie here in my opinion because of people.
So good.
Um, this is, this is referring to the policy we have currently. And the wording in that policy says that the board president breaks the tie. It doesn't have anything to do with that meeting. It has to do with what's been mentioned in our policy.
But this says as it specifically pertains to the August, August 11th, 2021.
Chris's, Chris's point is that he doesn't feel that we have two valid candidates. That's, that's his objection.
Correct. Correct.
Not what you, not the phrase, but the fact he's, he's saying there wasn't a tie, had there not, had we, he doesn't feel that there was a tie because he doesn't feel that there were two valid candidates.
So. August 11th, 2021, struck?
Yes.
And then just put.
This is, this is a temporary, this is temporary. We're getting back, we're getting back to it later on. The problem.
Yeah. I agree that August 11th, 2021 would be taken out.
So you would like the, the current policy, the future policy, yes or no, to state that the board president never has that opportunity on a tie vote?
No, we're not, we're not there yet, no. That's coming up later. But we've got, we're modifying it. Bob, would you like to make comments on this?
I, I don't have any specific comments. Remember, this is all, depending on the outcomes of these votes, determines whether or not you get to the things further down on the agenda. So I think you could vote or someone could vote in opposition to it. But if the procedure is not amended, then you're still in your debate as to whether there's one or two candidates, but you're now, that procedure is in effect.
And we go back to the original policy and procedures. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, the procedure does have a sentence in it that allows it to modify.
Slightly modify it. Go ahead, Ken. I'm sorry. I was gonna say, I think what Bob was just alluding to, which was that, the, that item, uh, three is I'm pulling it up on my screen. Uh, it could be slightly modified to make room for Chris's concern. The, uh, I'm gonna read from the quoted language, board president shall determine which candidate, um, wins. Uh, in the web, I'm drafting on the fly here, but, uh, can we drop out the reference to the tie?
No. I mean, that's, that's the whole thing with, with what we're doing here.
Yeah, I mean, there, you don't have a, depending on how you look at it, again, I'm not trying to revisit the history of the voting. But yeah, you didn't have a candidate receive a majority vote of the remaining members. So maybe it can be phrased that way, Tim. If the tie is a, a sensitive word.
Or the disputed tie. How's that? Chris, would that satisfy you if we say, call it the disputed tie?
Yep. That, that registers my objection.
Bob? Any thoughts on that?
Bob, I'm wondering if you and I are the only ones hearing each other.
Yeah, I can hear you. Ken, can you hear Tim?
Yes, we're, we're all here in both of you. Do you have any problems with the, with?
Laura?
Yeah, do you have any, can you hear us? Oh, you, you can't hear me? Oh. Uh, did you have any problems with Tim's, uh, adding the phrase disputed tie instead of just tie? We lost our network connection. Sorry, with us, we have technical difficulty. We lost Tim and we lost Bob.
It says no internet. See, I'm gonna go to settings and see what we got.
See, I'm gonna go to settings and see what we got. Okay.
Technology's great when it works.
Okay, can you see and hear us? Okay, oh wait, here, this computer's off. Okay, can you see and hear us? Okay. Okay, how about now? Okay, let's see where my camera is.
Is that the camera over here?
See, this is, no, they can't see on the camera here, let's see if I can join, let me see if their settings here.
They can't see much anyway.
Oh, here. Control E.
I think you just, I think you have, you just held it on.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we're back. We're back. Where were you? Oh. Good speaker.
Yeah, that works for me, Tim.
Bob, any comments on that? All right.
Did you have a motion on the floor? I got you. Okay, Amy, okay, Amy moved, Carol, second, would you care to withdraw your motion? Okay, would you care to make a new motion?
Make the new motion.
Okay, second, Carol, all right. The movement second to suspend the application of procedure 113, fulfilling board vacancies specifically the phrase, "Board presidential shall determine which candidate wins the tie that pertains to the August 11th, 2021 disputed tie vote on candidates provided a policy and procedure are determined." A discussion. Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Right, carry it. Oh, thank you, Tim, forgot about you. Not casual, there's a delay from the office out there. Right, excellent, four, discussion and action to modify procedure 113, filling board vacancies, those five, the board vacancies that arose in June 2021, and to serve as a policy for filling such vacancy.
This is referring to, like, here, but I also, for, after, or, I like the old modify procedure 113.
So the changes are. Well, everybody's got this. Any questions?
I, I think my, my objection is again that it states that no, have candidate received a majority of the vote, and there is really only one viable candidate, in my opinion, so I don't know, Tim, want to work with that one again? So, yeah, can I use some?
Chris has a problem. You know, same place, basically, but the you have a specific period that you want to modify, Chris?
Uh, yeah, basically just where it says that rising in June 2020, after no, have candidate received a vote on, and, you know, my, my objection is, once again, that there is only one valid candidate, so I don't, I don't know, I just need to put an objection to that, or if there's a way to restate that, Tim? Okay.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. All right, a discussion, a further discussion on that motion.
All right, thanks for clarifying, Tim.
Bob, thank you, Tim. A further discussion. All right, motion on four. But we have, we have a motion, we need a motion to modify procedure 113, filling board vacancies as applied to board vacancies that arose in June 2021, to serve as the policy for filling such vacancies. Item number four on your agenda.
Make a motion.
If, so moved by Amy.
A second.
Second by Chris. A further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry it. Ten, five, discussion and action to direct the implementation of procedure 113, filling board vacancies, whether with, whether with or without any board adopted modifications in order to fill that vacancy that arose in June 2021. What this is doing is directing the board to go ahead and implement a policy that we just approved in item four. Okay, so now we've proven we have, now we have to.
A second.
Move the second to approve action to direct, or to direct implementation of procedure 113, filling board vacancies, whether with or without any board adopted modifications, in order to fill the vacancy that arose in June 2021. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Right, aye.
Carry it. All right, Tim, I keep cutting you off because you're, you had a little delay, I'll wait a little longer. Okay, item number six, possible consideration of one or more motions to appoint a qualified elector to fill the board vacancy that arose in June 2021.
I would like to also make a motion to Julie Wald, fill the policy.
It has a move and second to approve Julie Wald as representative for this policy. You sort of make them hold on. Okay, my exercise.
Go ahead, Tim. I was planning on asking for a real call, Tim.
I would like to say something. I don't feel that this vote is very important, based for our board, that we are very transparent, and the whole debacle with deadlines needs to be put behind us, there's been a whole lot directed by that. I do believe that if anyone thought Monday, August 6th was a deadline, they could question that, because why are you saying August 6th, Monday? It is a Friday. Why didn't they come forward and say something like that? I also do believe that it was not fair to the rest of the board, that we weren't even notified of this change, and I just hope that the board sees it, to do the right thing, and see the candidate who got their papers in on time, who is very qualified, and will represent, swallow very well.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement, so the one thing that I think as a board that we all agree was when both Connie and Julie came back in the room, and we sent them on their way, we all, we all said, yeah, listen, these are two very qualified people, you guys are both very qualified, so if we're, if we're making this motion, and as I think you said, we're extending our vote to the table, it makes sense that we would vote in Julie, if we all truly believe that she is truly qualified. Which is something that we all.
I will make another comment, over the years, we've had this happen a number of times, we have always had a minimum of five candidates.
At least three.
At least three, Tim, you were one of what, five, seven, 10? Yeah, we always had a lot of different candidates to choose from. And, and I'm not saying that Julie wasn't a great candidate, but I would also like to say that it would have been nice to have other great candidates to choose from. We made a vote, and it doesn't really matter who we made that vote for, but there were four people that chose not to vote for one candidate or another. All of our reasons might have been different. But I really don't think that there's anything wrong with having more candidates to choose from. Chris, you had three?
I, it was just two.
Just the two?
But I, I agree with you, I think there should be.
So, you know, I don't want you to think we're the bad guys because of what we did, but it's also very nice to have a choice, and I'm sure when I'm up for reelection, you are gonna be glad you have a choice. And I don't understand why you don't feel that that's okay as board members, that we don't have a choice. There was a deadline, but it has to be a majority vote, it was four to four, and it could have been the same vote, whether there was a deadline or not, with one candidate, we might have come to the same solution.
All right, a further discussion on Lord Gregory. To Chris's point, that we went away from that previous meeting where both candidates were commended for being qualified candidates, true, we commended Julie for being a qualified candidate equally, conversely, we commended Connie for being a qualified candidate, so both of them were commended equally, okay? Also, I, my other thought here is that we already went through affirming Connie's thought, we always, to my understanding, have had choices to make with candidates. Choices are always a good thing, okay? All right, please, Tom, now, we're talking, the board is discussing this, okay? And I think it's always a good idea to have candidates, to have choices, back to the, one of the previous meetings, I'm sorry, I don't know which one right now, we came to a conclusion that we were gonna reset the process, if everyone had equal chance to apply and go forward from there, and I don't see anything wrong with resetting the process, starting over, I think.
I have an opportunity. I have to say, I disagree with you, right, we had the process to begin with, and one candidate got their paper at the time, and she was very qualified, in my opinion, and one candidate did not, and it sounds like you kind of agreed on it, I don't mean to say behind the scenes, but she was approached later, and was allowed to turn in her papers later, so I'm looking at it as, we had one candidate, I don't know if you need a pool of a lot of candidates, so you could give one, because I thought that Julie was very well qualified, she answered all her questions, she seemed to know a lot about board meetings and going on, and everything, very well informed, I think she'd be an excellent candidate. So I think as a gesture of good faith, and to restore our standing in the community, the board for her, it will only be until April, and then she has to run again. I'm just saying, we need to do this to store the integrity of the board.
Next, I do, I have a role call, sorry, Carol. About voting on, yeah, yeah, third by what, again? Amy has nominated Julie to voting on whether to appoint Julie to this vote.
Yes.
Right? No?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Amy, no. Oh, Tim? Oops, sorry. So, once again, we're four, four times, the motion fails, we go on to option number seven. Motion, discretion of motion to amend policy 113, filling board vacancies of procedure 113, filling board vacancies, effectively, prospectively, and as applied to vacancies first arising after August 23rd, 2020. 113, filling board vacancies prospectively and as applied to vacancies first arising after August 23rd, 2020. 2021, yes. Okay. Alright, this is to. Say this is to add the policy going forward, starting from the procedure.
No support for the two for you guys.
I think everybody should be signing this.
You showed it.
Good job.
We're all going in April. Not sure.
Okay, now that the discussion.
You are so. You're so disrespectful.
Uh, yes, I've heard that from the backside of the room for a long time.
I'll press out.
Okay, procedure 113, filling board policies you have in front of you.
Right, so this is what's linked to your agenda. And it's the policy and procedure as was modified in these policy committee meetings. So these are the changes to the policy that would be used moving forward, starting with the new. That's tomorrow, when we get this posted.
Alright.
Oh, you're right, second paragraph. It'll listen. It's a typo.
Okay, that's what was wrong, that's what was wrong procedure. Okay, so, Katie, you got that? Thank you, Tim. Good aye. Alright, any further discussion on letting the policy 13, filling board pop. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Someone summarize the essence of this.
So as captured in your policy committee meeting on Thursday, the changes to the policy itself, policy 113, filling board vacancies, the language change. Rather than saying will be accomplished as soon as possible within 60 days, the attorneys added some language or have recommended language for us. Saying the appointment will be determined as soon as practicable and once the vacancy exists, provided that at least one eligible person has been identified who is willing to be considered for the appointment. The appointment process shall be structured so as to ensure the board has one or more opportunities within 60 days of the vacancy arising to attempt to make an appointment decision via open meeting. And then it goes on to say, down below, some of the language is the same about open meetings laws. Majority vote of the remaining board members is required for any appointments to fill a board vacancy. If the remaining board members do not fill the vacancy within such 60 day period, then the vacancy shall be filled as further specified in the procedures. So if you open up the procedures document, the way the board had changed the procedure document, we noted that it will be posted in the district's normal posting locations, which for our district, that's in the windows of district office, that's on the district website. And that's in the district's designated local newspaper. The other change was letter D was added. So if a change in the process with a specific example noted, a timeline extension is deemed necessary within five days of the initial public notice of vacancy, the modifications shall. So it's posted and within five days, there needs to be a change. That change will be noticed to the public, will be altered on the district website to include the original language and the change language and the reason for the modification. And number three, and if feasible, within the established timelines, will be noticed in the designated local newspaper, including the original language, the change language, and the reason for the modification. And then letter E would be added, if the changes cannot be made within five days of the initial public notice of vacancy, changes to the process may occur, including but not limited to halting and reinitiating the process with the approval of a quorum majority vote of the board. And the only other change in your procedure document is the very last. In item number five, we're changing the wording from election to appointment. This is not an election, it's a school board appointment to a vacancy. And then later in number five, it goes through what happens if there's a tie. So, board members will vote. If no one receives a quorum or majority vote on the first ballot, the board will vote again, using just the top two vote receivers or more than two if or more than two if applied tie votes. Tie votes as finalists. If no finalist candidate receives the quorum or majority vote on the second ballot, the voting will continue in the same manner with the top two vote getters and any remaining ties. If no candidate receives a quorum majority vote on the third ballot, and if a quorum majority of the seated board approves it, the president shall determine which candidate wins the tie. And I see a title there. The tie instead of tie. If no quorum or majority is reached, the notice and application process shall be reinitiated to appoint a board member to the vacant seat. So the current language states if there's three ties on a ballot, the school president shall break the tie. The way the committee discussed it was modifying that to say if there are three ties, then the board would need to vote. And if the majority of the board says yes, the president can break the ties, that would happen. If the majority of the board does not say the president should break the tie, then the process would be reinitiated, reposted. And in consultation with attorney Bob Butler, my understanding is that that's very, very typical in school districts. Almost universal, I think was the wording that he used, almost universal to start the process over.
Okay, does everybody understand the modifications to the policy and to the procedure? Any discussion? Uh, we need. No, we'll do the policy and to the procedure, Tim. Yes, we don't, we haven't got a motion. We're planning on doing it as a combined motion. The approval of the other procedure changes. You may have a problem with that. I do recall that discussion. Ready for vote? We have a motion, I think for a motion to approve the changes to the policy again. And the procedure 113 for filling board vacancies prospectively as applied to vacancies first arising after August 23rd, 2021. That was better, probably, for the evening. This policy would be in place. They will accept that motion. Move by Craig, second. I'll second it. Move the second to the policy 113, filling board vacancies, and that procedure 113, filling board vacancies prospectively as applied to vacancies first arising after August 23rd, 2021, with the changes that Tim had suggested for notification of board members of the dates, specific dates, and any notification of any data changes which I explicitly have ordered ahead of yet. Okay. Good thinking, yes. Yeah, we got that. You're good on that, Kate. All of the papers say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Sure, six, six, four, two, yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, now we have a simple one. Discussion next. This does require a lot of discussion or explanation. Discussion action to change the district's board approved official newspaper, the watch out program. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that's what you were talking about, the easy one.
Oh. Alright, discussion action, approve new policy 333, non description, approve the correct one. Now, it might be my suggestion, I think there's still a lot of consternation on this, discussion on. I would recommend we send back the policy with that. That'd be a work procedure for that.
I agree also, and I think it needs to be somewhat brought up from the audience about, you know, what goes on behind closed doors with teachers. And even if we have this policy in place, once that door shuts, we don't know what's really going on in the classroom. And we can't be there to monitor everything. I was reading the Kewaki School minutes a while ago, and one of the comments I found kind of interesting was, let's see, so and so, I won't intername, would like a policy for teachers to be accountable for teaching off topic. And I found that very interesting. And with with critical race theory, you know, there's some teachers might be more favorable to it. And once they're in the classroom, like I said, we don't know if that's going on or not. So I think we should incorporate something like that in the policy also, that any teacher who strays from what is in the policy suffer repercussions, like if it's losing their job or being punished somehow, but there should be something in there that this is not allowed.
The only problem I have with that is describe off topic. You know, I do find that, I guess, to ask a question about something as long, again, as long as it's not advocating that we've specified in the policy that it should not be advocating for, pushing an agenda. If a topic comes up with to ask a question, that'll, that's not off topic, whatever that means, I'm not sure what that means. And the teacher answers it or starts a discussion amongst the class, they could be punished for it. And I fully believe that education is at this point where you're having discussions, open discussions on things, and not trying to shut discussion down. I totally agree, you don't want anybody advocating and pushing students out of direction or whatever because it's their personal agenda. That I have a problem with, having a discussion about something. Boy, I would hope that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to teach our kids, critical thinking, to be able to take an information assimilated and make a decision based on what they've heard, you know, from the discussions on. I can see where he says if we get off topic, that's like, well, open discussion of the topic, I don't know.
Well, I think Craig had a really good example when he, when he talked about teaching something versus promoting it or advocating it. Because everybody's idea of teaching is something different. And I think that when we discussed it at curriculum, I thought that those words really spoke highly. So instead of teaching, we're promoting or advocating, and I think that that covers the value.
That was, that was my point. Right, okay, not to shut down discussions. I also. I think it's a good discussion. I think actually it's locked back in the policy. I mean, it's got some working points, but I would suggest we move this back to policy for further review and discussion.
I agree with that. I actually have a couple of comments that I'd like to say. I agree with you, Kat, that it should go back to policy. I have a couple of emails here from Stitch My's one, Abby Cinkie, who talks about her concerns with not just being in curriculum, but also potentially if taught in service situation. So I think, you know, we just have to have a more robust discussion on that or a more robust definition. And then also one, Christine Roll, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her last name correctly, but she talks about the idea of CRT and not just critical race theory, but any, you know, and I think we kind of, I mean, Craig and Tim did a great job with with where we are. I think it's just, it's a minor tweaks, you know, it's where we are. But she she brings up the point that, you know, this is, you know, there's a lot of different things that encapsulate that definition. And it's not just CRT, it's identity politics, it's ethnic diversity. It's a lot of different pieces. So I agree, this needs to go back to committee to refine.
Just to comment on that email with the 25 items that she outlined. I found her rather interesting. About 10 minutes later, she came back and said, I forgot, I forgot social justice. And that's the problem, start delineating things. Tomorrow, there's a new phrase or whatever. I think we need to come up with something broad that not delineate every possible terminology because, right, 10 minutes later, there's another one that somebody's gonna have to say, we don't want whatever. Well.
But I agree, it did, yeah. It's not just, you can't just come up with all these different definitions. It has, you have to figure out a way to word it so it can include all of that.
If you look at some of the states throughout the United States, the legislature in many states adopted almost the same identical language.
That. Points to A, B, and C. Prior to our Thursday morning call, it was a cutting case, according to God's plan. It was a cutting case from the Idaho bill, I don't know if it was a bill or a law, but it was just a cutting case. We modified a word or two in comparison for the temp later that morning. But otherwise, to God's point, this has already been discussed at least by Wednesday, but just.
I saw the same in South Carolina.
Very, very thoroughly before. These are what we have here, it's a bunch of like processes that have stayed up.
I trust that you would be too. What point do you delineate? What, I mean, you could have a list forever and not, but what would be the broad guidance? I mean, she's one, one well versed in.
Right, I mean, some of that gets to be. Right, I mean, some of that gets to be, some of that gets to be tricky, so for instance, need to be listed. Like teachers will not promote and advocate following, I think we're all I think we're on the same page, teachers shouldn't be advocating certain theories, they might teach it, but they shouldn't be advocating, here's how you should think, here's how you should act. If you, like, let's use the word equity. I would I guess I, I would say, I would hope that our school advocates for equity. Here's an example, special education students, they need perhaps extra tutoring. It's not equal, they're getting more because they have an IEP that says they have an individualized educational program that they need more in order to access an equitable curriculum. Or if someone's in a wheelchair and they need a larger stall in a restroom, that doesn't mean that all stalls are equal, it means they have equitable access to be able to use the. So there's several examples of where equity, the schools and laws do advocate for equity, or we need to do so because of the law, so I think, I'm just saying that as one example of where I think we would need to be careful of how we list that. As Craig had drafted, number one and two, that number one was, was getting at, he reiterates and prefers that this policy in our curriculum will adhere to policy five eleven, non-discrimination statement. My impression was that was supposed to cover all that, so our teachers are not advocating for any type of discrimination. And in number two, our teachers will not be promoting or advocating any of the following, that any certain ethnicity or color or national origin or religion is inherently superior or inferior. That's don't agree with that, don't want.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
They can teach CRT, but they can't.
Teaching can encompass many, many things. I tried to explain this Thursday morning, some of you were there. Teaching can encompass a child raised, again, can you tell me, teacher, what this is? Now, are we saying we can't teach this? I hope not. Or a discussion is conducted by a teacher as a neutral facilitator. Can we not have a discussion encompassing all points of view? That is, by some, considered teaching, that's a teaching nothing, okay? Teaching, here's some reading assignments for this concept, here's some teaching, or reading assignment opposed to this concept, that is teaching by some definition, just assigning different work. What I was trying to get at is that we're not going to ban teaching, but we are trying to stop advocating or supporting this pernicious theory.
That's a career, that's a teaching area, pardon my French, what, what is? Teaching, so if a child raises his hand and says, like CRT, yeah, we're gonna teach CRT, but we won't advocate it or promote.
Because we're gonna allow a discussion.
We're just gonna teach.
I'm trying to get a way to, we excluded the word teaching.
Yeah, we gotta find a better language and a better word to use.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna stop the discussion here, this is not up for discussion with the board, with the public.
I'll see you next time. All right. Thank you. That's all right. All right, so people to the board, we'll just back to policy. All right. All right, item nine, this is one I was gonna say had, so nothing to create problems with. Discussion action, change the district's board approved official newspaper to the watch out framework from the Lake Country Now. The reason for this is, I I've been very, you know, we used to have the Lake Country reporter often notice the Lake Country Distorder. There are means, I swear, I did a test that they reported on, that'd be the point. They at least covered local news, okay? Since the, since the reporter went out of business or was purchased by USA Today, yeah, Trump, USA Today, it has become anything but local news, if you look at the, if you get that, if you get the electronic version, if you look at, you look at five weeks, you know, weeks where you got five or six different versions of, they'll have the same cover. But hearing all this stuff about going on Shorewood or somewhere else, that's a very, very little stuff. Lake Country Now actually takes the Lake Country. Freeman, and it's a weekly paper, seventy-one cents a line, I believe, Kate said, for an ad, where the Freeman is a six-day paper. But they now also have an online version, which it didn't have before. It's forty-one cents per line for their ads. But it covers the Lake Country area, not, not everybody else. Does a much, much more thorough job of covering, thorough heads surrounding communities. So that was the reason I suggested that we move our, move our official, paper official record from Lake Country Now to Watch Out.
I made a motion, we move the paper from the Lake Country Now to the Watch Out Freeman.
Right, so. Okay, move second to, Kate's official newspaper from to the watch out. Discussion, not all those parents say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Bob, thank you very much for your assistance this evening. We always appreciate, sorry to tie up your, your Monday evening. We'll have a beer on me. Thank you, good night, enjoy your vacation. All right, we have a motion, good job, good, great.
We have a question for future agenda, I don't know if all of it's a committee, but I think we really need to do a year-end survey to see how we're performing.
We have.
Yeah. I was just wondering, the last one, stuff I was just thinking. Needing good timing, like, around average first quarter of school year, reaching out to parents. Can see how we're doing it, I think it's like types of change that maybe we revisit that survey, make tweaks that are relevant. Stuff that's actual. So seeing what things that we're doing, and the things that we need to.
I have a great idea, Sue.
Committee or. Yes, I do it. I would think we go back to great question. Yeah, that's where.
I mean, I guess I would question, would you like to charge administration, our, we have our, our team of seven or eight develop draft? And then bring it to policy or whatever.
I would like to do some, at least, at least, right, I'll kind of give us ourselves. We know we want her. First word. Here, we're joined in. So whatever, perhaps, if we go here, from groups now here, but like, here, we're. We text.
Yes.
Good idea. All right. Any other ideas, you forget that?
I know I sent this out to you guys earlier, sent me some, I think it should have an interesting item that makes our board packet available on our, you know, just for six, six transparency. I added a screenshot of what's followed us, it's a, it just makes it, you know, everybody can access not just our school board notes, but also other hyperlinks so they can get to the PDFs, and that, you know, it just creates more transparency.
I would, I would recommend that we put that in policy also, because we have that whole one hundred series of school related policies, and it might be nice to just formalize that.
Okay. So that would be something I'd go to, not just a future discussion here, but to report a policy first, is that right with that, that works?
That's what I would recommend, that would, I mean, the board could make a motion and hopefully do that, and will, you know, will certainly apply. It just seems like, since we have so many policies related to how the board functions, that might be also what involves. And if we're talking about that topic, I would like to extend that to a conversation again about our video recording and taping, because it's and if you see that some people online livestream trying to record, or trying to livestream with a camera, and it's all the same person that's trying to take minutes, you know, and it's just not it's not working, so I think if you made a really good effort at that, and we should probably have the board discuss further, how are we going to make this work? It might take me someone to come in and then where, you know, where that money come from.
I think we talked about it, building grounds, purchase a clothes machine.
So I, I appreciate you bringing up the packet piece, and I, I feel like this would just extend that, so in terms of public transparency and trying to do our best, some of this is just not working when it's one person trying to do it all, who's not an expert at that, that process.
Okay, any else? That will, great question, Jer. Go to Jer, all fair guy. Enjoy your vacation, Tim. Oh, look. Do you have a campfire going there or anything? Have a campfire or something going on there? Okay. Good night.